Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting on this Monday. No, it's not Monday, it's Thursday, November the 8th, at 7:20 PM. Ms. Derry, if you recall, roll please.
Ms. Nancy Brown.
Here.
Billy Johnson is absent. Aunt Hal.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Tim Terry is absent. Lance Terry is absent. There's a form with the addition of the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, if you would please stand, we have the privilege of having Ron Ronnie Deal, the First Baptist Church, to lead us in prayer. And then we have a very special guest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance right after that. I'll introduce him in just a second. Let's pray together. Well, we thank you for your blessings. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for so many things that this time of year we're reminded to just stop and say thank you. Well, I thank you for the freedoms in this nation, for the things that many times we take for granted. And we just pray that we'll continue to be a nation that acknowledges and recognizes the privileges that we have. And when I pray for the folks in California tonight that are hurting families, that are suffering in a community that is, Lord, just dealing with crisis, Lord, here in Arkansas, we just lift up those people and pray for them tonight. And, Lord, I thank you for this, for this community. Thank you for the leadership of this community. I ask your blessings upon those that make decisions and provide the support and the service that this community enjoys. Lord, I pray for the City Council, for the mayor, for all those others in leadership positions, give them wisdom and guidance and direction. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you, sir. If you have the microphone. As I mentioned, we have a special guest tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I came up on this list, Katie Fincher. Patty, sorry. She's three years old. She informed me, and I handed her a flag that fell apart a few weeks ago at the Ball Festival. And as soon as she got that flag in her hand, she decided the Pledge of Allegiance. So I asked her to come and do that for us tonight. Are you ready? All right. You don't have to use that.
To the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Would you like to do a song? Thank you, sir. Brother Deal, you don't get to leave. That's not how that works.
He was trying to beat some boy.
Yeah, he was. But it stuck out.
Did you want any?
No. Thank you. Thank you, Patty, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Approval of minutes for the October, the first meeting, council meeting, if council has said those matters, if you haven't already, and ask for approval of both minutes.
Mayor Lake, most would approve those minutes.
Second. Most would say.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Hal.
Yes.
Atkins Lo.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. On your agenda, we have recommendations and acknowledgements tonight. I just wanted to mention a couple of things tonight. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it. I attended the retirement ceremony of Sheriff Hollenbeck, excuse me, last night at the Fort Smith River Pavilion, I think it's called. And it was a great ceremony, and just, if you've seen him, pat him on the back. He served for, what's, what are his years?
Thirty-six.
Judge, thirty-six years in law enforcement, yes. And did a great job, and I commend him. And I got to boast and brag on Greenwood, being the safety, safety of the city. For some reason, Sheriff-elect Toby Runyon decided he'd let three mayors talk all back-to-backs, which was kind of scary, but they will do that in conjunction, I think, and I think the chief here would agree that that made possible working side-by-side with Sheriff Hollenbeck and the county sheriff's department. So if you see him around town or somewhere, you might congratulate him. He's moving on to the Fort, uh, it's the Fort Smith School District, over in their security, basically, I think so. So he's changing his life, so good for him. Also, to remind you that a couple of weeks ago, I guess it has been now, another one sad, Chief Hicks, who's our chief of police here in Greenwood, passed away. And their ceremony, his funeral here, I think, a couple of weeks ago now, so sorely missed and certainly served Greenwood very well as the chief of police. On to the next item is committee reports. South Sebastian County Boys and Girls Club, Kenny's not here. I think you have a written report from Kenny tonight. So if you have any questions regarding that, please let me know or Tammy know so we can get to Kenny. S R C A, Lisa's not here. We have all of that report from her. Parks Commission, Michelle is not here. She don't think, no. So again, written in your packets, if you need anything for the matter, let us know. Our West Ward Commission, Mr. Adderley's here, he wants to fix it.
Here, council.
Please sit down.
Most everything that I've put on the update is actually on the agenda for discussion. But there were a couple of, just want to make sure where we did have a meeting, the mayor attended that as well as a couple of ward commissioners, and we had Spatter complaining there as well, but it's not what James thought. Have discussed that for a while, but we put out to the, we're still waiting for their response. Not completely optimistic, but we'll see what happens. Hopefully, they'll be back with us here in the next thirty days, and we'll go from there. Just want to make sure where that meeting did take place. Commission voted to extend John Bailey, so that, that's on the agenda. We also, as you're well aware, Ms. Azell resigned from the commission, so we're replacing her with Mr. Prochett, and her approval is on there as well. So that's pretty much starting our budget process. I think we're pretty close to being finished by the time, and we have started session this week, and we're at a good shape. I'm hoping that about twenty-sixth of this month of our next commission meeting, we'll finalize that and be done with our budget for 2019. So any questions to me?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Excuse me, regarding the citizen forum, portion of our agenda this time, and I have four people that have signed up tonight, so I'll call your names, you'll come to the microphone and state your name and your thoughts, and we will invite you to do that. Mr. Niles, you're first. You'll state your name and address, of course, and pray, please.
Josh Niles, 213 Lea Road, Greenville, Arkansas. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Kinsel, who's successful for us. Also, I'd like to congratulate my fellow seats there. Congratulations. I come before you today because originally, when I ran for City Council, I was under the assumption that I was just pretty much going to be the Lee Johnson spot against two other women who seemed to fit there. I've had conversations with a couple of people within City Hall, and I found out I was actually an actor against NCRA. That was not my agenda to begin with. Unfortunately, as I've known, past fourteen months, I'm a man that will stick behind what I said and do. So what I'm asking the council is to give me the opportunity to serve with you. I do understand Mr. Johnson's spot is coming up, and I would like that. A thousand eighty-nine, your citizens voted for me. That speaks volumes to me, that speaks volumes to the council, that almost one hundred citizens and roughly over twenty-seven hundred that voted, wanted me to be on the City Council. I believe that, out of, and no disrespect when I say this, I believe that Mr. AC won directly because of his experience in community service, and for all I respect that. But I'd like the opportunity to be able to serve with you. I do understand that we have a checkered patch, and we not always agree on everything. I want to get it out in the open that I believe that some citizens within Greenwood, and maybe some of y'all are actually on the board, and I have a hidden agenda to bring our call within the city of Greenwood, unless not the facts. The facts are, as everybody up here knows, that that availability is within Greenwood if they meet the requirements that the council has set forth under a private club. So there's no hidden agenda for me to bring that. What I would bring to the city of Greenwood is my leadership, my intelligence, my contacts, my availability, my means. I have the travel, excuse me, I have availability to travel anywhere in the country, any town. I have the means to be able to travel anywhere in the country, any town. I have the availability and the means to travel anywhere in the world to make contacts as far as, I'm blanking, sorry, as far as factories, as far as other corporations. I've written a long list. My resume is long. I've negotiated with Fortune five-hundred companies, and I know, some of y'all probably heard from my videos and watched them. I have a sanitation plan. It's about seventy-five percent done. I couldn't complete it because I can't plug in numbers that I don't know. I can't plug in things that I don't know as far as how y'all pay for things. Do you finance things? Do you pay cash for things? I don't know. I don't know that. I don't know the inside. My sanitation plan roughly brings about a million dollars of revenue into the city of Greenwood, supplies everybody with a forty-five gallon throwaway trash can. List goes on and on, the things that I can do for our community. It's, I could go on and on about me. I am a leader. I'm raising two leaders. This is my home. I wasn't born here. I'm sorry. This makes me angry. I wasn't born here. I wasn't raised here, but this is my home. Greenwood gave something to me that I never had. I never had. I saw it young. I never had solid structure. I went to roughly twenty-four, twenty-seven schools. I was nineteen when I went to high school. I probably should have been an attorney, or I could have been a doctor. I could have been into those things. But I started off a rough repo man that could hook your car faster than you could blink. And along that, I learned all these things, and I learned how to read contracts, how to negotiate contracts, how to write contracts. Sometimes I had to slow down and put the car in the right place, and put the period in the right place, and make sure my words are correct. Couldn't seem my mind move so fast. And I think that brings experience. I think that helps me, because I make it quickly. I think it fast. I move fast. Even though me and AC didn't have the chance to have a lot to make, I was ready, because my mind was like that. I photographed, I can remember anything. I'm qualified for this position. And in two years, if y'all put me in two years, if I don't do a good job, you know me that the citizens won't vote me back in. And the facts are, if y'all don't agree with something that I say, it's not that you cannot vote. I mean, that's just the facts. Sort of like the opportunity to work beside you, show you that I'm just a man that says it. And just because that we have a checkered patch, and just because sometimes when I get aggravated, I'm a little bit more, a little bit more verbal about it, then some people may just turn around in the face and they get mad. I just want the opportunity to get back to Greenwood, like Greenwood did. It's important to me. I think it speaks, once again, I think it speaks volumes to our citizens that we can set the standard of satisfying everybody. We satisfied sixteen hundred-plus votes, there is an AC that's ready to go on to those next forty years, and we can satisfy a thousand eighty-nine votes, satisfy a thousand eighty-nine votes by allowing me to serve, because they want me to serve. Most of those people don't know me personally, at all. I mean, I think getting eleven hundred votes and people knowing my name for fourteen months is, is pretty damn good. Most people quite crushed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Niles. Next on the list is Mr. Wayne Rock.
As the mayor said, my name is Wayne Rock. I live at 182 Kings Mountain Loop. I've lived in Greenwood for approximately eleven years. I am married. I've got two grown children and two grandchildren. My wife is Stephanie, and she's been a schoolteacher here in Greenwood for twenty-nine years. I am currently a Scott County deputy. I've been with the sheriff's office there since 2011. I have a total of twenty-nine years of law enforcement experience. Experienced the bottom of the token pole to, almost to the top of the token pole within the sheriff's department. I'm an arms instructor. I'm also certified as an instructor of development, and teach law enforcement classes. I am a U.S. Army Arkansas National Guard veteran. I spent over eight years in the Army National Guard, and I am very interested to become the next councilman with y'all's blessings, appointed for Mr. Johnson. I met Dr. Johnson when I worked at Sebastian County in the E.O., and me and him's been friends ever since. And so I have no enemies, I have no strangers. Prior to working full-time with Scott County, I worked as assistant store manager at CB's here in Greenwood. I did that for three years until a milking spot became available at the sheriff's office, and that's where I've been ever since. I thank y'all for y'all's consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ralph Meeger.
My name is Ralph Meeger. I live at 306 Locust Drive. I'm here to form the state managers, and replacing Dr. Johnson soon to be back in position four-three. I was born and raised here, approximately one percent of the city of Greenwood I probably relate to. But I do appreciate the opportunity, and I see this is a great opportunity to get back to the community, to see them a lot, and maybe thirty years. I am practically a lifelong resident here, and I would appreciate the council's consideration to replace Dr. Johnson and his vacancy. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Laura Rice.
I'm Laura Rice. I live at 1028 Evergreen Street in Greenville. I too would like to be considered for Dr. Johnson's slot. I have worked in public county, I worked in public county for twenty-four years, and for the last thirteen years, I've been in control of three million dollar businesses and programs. So budgets and procedures and finances is what I do my life. I'm a great little girl. I was raised here. My parents went through when I was still, I was with my children, and now my grandchildren are pretty good. So I'm a long history in the town, and the impetus for this for me was, a few years ago, some of you may know, but I was very ill, and I spent four months in the hospital. And this community came together for me, and it was amazing what they did. And I just want to get back, and this is the place where I can see that my skillset will fit the best. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate you. That is all that has signed up this evening on the citizen forum, but if anyone else wanted to speak at this time, we would allow that. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the agenda additions. You ready, council?
I don't have one. Do you need to add that one?
I don't think, well, I think that is about the discussion on lax duty regulations. My initial recommendation was to not do anything. There were some obvious members that disagreed with me, and to me, and to carry that thing to put together something along the lines of what was being proposed. I paid an effort to do that, and I've been put it before you. I'm not asking for any action tonight. I would like you to take a look at it, and I've tried to incorporate some of the things that I've heard at some of the various meetings that have been discussed, and it's good for the block for next month's meeting.
Would you like me to throw in the next month's agenda?
Yeah, if you would. You put it on back, it's a question.
Thank you, sir. Other than that, there are no agenda additions. That's what I was trying to do, get some sort of applause. Too late for that, no, it's okay. So no agenda additions. The fire department originally this morning had, had served his spot, but he removed that later in the day, so we'll move on with business. Our old business title, we have the first item is ordinance adopting an inter-local agreement for mental health catchment areas, third reading. David Hudson is here, very graciously, as he appeared now, before, I think, two times, maybe three, to answer any questions that the council might have regarding this issue. So I would ask today, Mr. Judge, and by the way, congratulations, newly elected judge again, so congratulations on your election. So council, have any questions or comments for David Hudson on this issue?
Yes, Judge, I would, you know, I'm curious, again, on what we think are the expected costs, you know, that we can have a budget for for 2019.
Well, I think it's still important for, you have funds allocated for jail re-employment now, and I would just raise a point again, that if you don't participate in this program, and individuals that, you don't give your law enforcement officers an option to divert or brought to the jails, you will be paying more money than if you divert. That is a guarantee. Okay, so whatever you budget, if you had thirty thousand dollars for jail reimbursement, if you don't participate in this, you will be paying more than you would have voted. Bottom line, that's the money issue. That is the money issue. But this is more than a money issue. This is the manner that's important to the people that you serve at the beginning, that you give the law enforcement officers, and I would defer to your people, and these folks are forced, the option to use their discretion to have better treatment for the citizens that you represent in bringing the mentally ill that are not dangerous and not violent served time and dead, where they're not going to be treated like they went in a diversion program, stabilize them, and return them back to their community. You would be doing an injustice and not giving to your citizens that you represent. It's going to cost you less money, if you send them to jail. We will gladly send you a fifty-four dollar bill for every day during the jail. Okay? The agreement right now, it's going to be five dollars, and we're going to let it solve that. I can't imagine how it ever would be significantly more than, as we talked about before, that it would never approach what it's going to cost you in the whole thing. And the outcome will be worse for the people that you represent. And I would encourage you to give input from your chief again. That could be doing a disservice to your citizens. Every city and every county has adopted an agreement in larger cities, and we have ten law enforcement officers who are required to process any restraint, and don't, they're not required to facilitate. I would like to see everybody facilitate. To me, to the council, this is a no-brainer. Okay? It's going to cost you less money, and you can provide better service, you're going to do a favor to all of your law enforcement personnel. If you don't participate, you're going to put more burden on your law enforcement personnel, and you're going to do a disservice to the people that you represent in the community. The money shouldn't be clear. It's going to cost you more money if you don't participate. I don't see a significant risk.
Well, again, I guess my risk that I see is that, you know, we're, somebody's just kind of signing a blank check. Now, you say that, yes, we do have a budget allocated for, you know, criminal justice, you know, and for, you know, sending people up there, you know, to the county jail, and a rate of fifty-four dollars a day. And so I guess I was wishing that, you know, either from our chief or from y'all, you know, to say, okay, well, there's estimated that, you know, the number of people that fit that criteria that would go up to that facility, that would, you know, be, take the burden off of the, our police department, you know, average, you know, thirty a month or whatever like that. And I'll say, okay, thirty a month, five dollars a day, you know, and the average day in there is three, you know, three days or whatever, you know, then we can kind of, we can estimate that. You know, or if you said, hey, our current budget is, you know, thirty thousand, and I don't have to, again, defer to Tom, you know, exactly what that is, but you said, hey, we're, you know, thinking that we're going to need, you know, half of your budget. And I say, okay. I feel comfortable saying that, you know, to the, you know, you know, the facility, the, you know, the crime stabilization units, you know, we're going to budget fifteen thousand dollars for what that amount is. You know, but to say that, you know, we're committed to this, you know, for the, you know, for the duration of it, you know, I guess sometimes I've seen things in the past where, and I don't say this exactly like it, but, you know, there've been things back in the past where they said, well, this is the fire department, they said, you know, there's a grant out there for the fire department, and you can have a full-time fire department, and, you know, that'll be funded a hundred percent, you know, by the federal government, or, you know, and then every year it's going to, you know, decrease, so that at the end of five years, I'd say twenty percent a year is going to be on the city. And sometimes, you know, and I really can't see them here that, you know, where it says that, you know, I understand that there's like a, you know, one point six million dollar, you know, kind of grant that's been allocated, whatever for these, and what I understand it is for the, for CSU units that, you know, are being established around the state. And so, again, what I'm wondering there is, you know, do you see, you know, that that's going to be, you know, in the budget going forward, that we're going to have that kind of money? Or is the, you know, is that, you know, initial seed money, and then, you know, that's going to diminish over time, and then it's going to be more and more responsibility of, you know, the local areas to, you know, supply that full budget?
I was going to, no, that Judge was very gracious, and he qualified some of the language last month, and the way I read the contract now, that if it comes to finding a word, we give thirty-nine dollars or some more out. And so that provision in there, that, to me, alleviates that concern, and I agree with the judge, and I agree with Will, but this is something that I've been taking off my city attorney hat, because we didn't, it would be beneficial. But the risk that I was concerned about was alleviated by the potential qualifications, and I appreciate that.
You're talking, you're referring to Section 10, termination of agreement, item C on page four.
Yes.
That pretty much covers all of our concerns at Section 10C. We run out of money, we write a letter, in thirty days, we terminate it.
There is very little risk to all of us, including, including the county government. Nobody is in a position to assume the full cost of operating a crisis stabilization unit without state funding. The whole key to this is the state funding. When Governor Hudson stepped up and secured through the legislature funding for these pilots in the state of Arkansas, that created the opportunity to have this discussion. We would not do it otherwise. In Sebastian County, and I don't think any of the counties, in the six-county catchment area, or any cities will make up the difference. And I had this discussion with the city of Fort Smith as well. So, the program will be dependent and is dependent on continued state funding, and that's why the language is in there. If the state funding is not continued, is not continued, we have no obligation, you know, to hold them on most likely fail. And all, I hope that does not happen, because it's not good for our community, it's not good for the jail. There's nothing good about that. So, uh, I'm looking forward this to continue to stabilize, I hope to expand it. And, uh, but I think I can pretty much guarantee you, if you don't do it, if you're not in it, you will be paying more money, and you're doing a disservice, I think, I think, for your law enforcement personnel and for the citizens you serve.
Judge, I'll just, I have one, uh, just one thing to call out here. On, uh, section three, the ordinance talking about the payments, says the payments identified by the local permits on May one, twenty eighteen. I assume that that date would be modified based on the date of the contract.
And, you know, we, we did not bill anybody any money at all. Um, and I, I'm not asking any, any of the counties or any cities to help the county reimburse us for a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of investment to make this happen. Uh, we, we chose to engage in this because we think it's the right thing to do, and we're trying to be fair to all the counties and our mental health catchment, mental health catchment and all the cities. We're not looking for that kind of equity. We're really trying to be a partner with you to improve service. And I'm all about the money. That's why we talked about reconciling on the annual basis, and, uh, we got the fourth right. There's nothing hidden here. This is just, we're just trying to make, um, to make an improvement, and I think it has all been, I think, an improvement. I've had good feedback from many matters and police people to appreciate the opportunity to help people contribute and not put them in their jails in other counties. And, you know, and our county's had the most, uh, most of the purpose. So, uh, I hope, I hope you go ahead and move on with this, uh.
Mayor, counsel, I, I'd just say that with the understanding that, uh, we're not going to pay retroactive to May first. I, you know, I think this, I agree, this is a program that we need to have as, as an agreement. I mean, I'm like a lot of you, there's concerns about it, but I, I fully trust Judge Hudson. I fully trust our relationship with the county. And with that, I make a motion that we place this on its third reading.
Uh, sir.
I'll take that one.
Uh, and, and, and again, I'd say that, yes, you know, I, you know, did all everything that Daniel said there, you know, again, you know, my, uh, and I believe that, you know, mental health, you know, is, uh, a definite need, you know, that we need to address, you know, among, you know, offenders and stuff. And, uh, and, uh, playing wrong, you know, uh, I think a couple of weeks ago, whatever, uh, you know, kind of explained, you know, the situation that our law enforcement has to do, that, you know, when they bring somebody up to the county jail or whatever, that's a, almost a whole day waste of their time, you know, they've got to deal, oh, let's pay the work, and they just can't hand them off. And instead, under the CSU units, I'll just be able to, to hand them off, and it'll be, you know, a much quicker, cleaner process. So, I, I definitely see the, the need and the importance of it. You know, uh, my concern was just, again, you know, just from a financial, uh, point of view, you know, and just, but that was my hesitancy, but the last instance, my handy has said that, uh, you know, he gave us a, a kind of a lay out, you know, on thirty days, and, you know, I mean, I think he met all of our concerns, and I really appreciate you coming here, Judge Hudson, and, and, and being willing to, you know, give in on that aspect, I, I sure appreciate that.
Thank you, and I, I anticipate we'll be continuing to talk about the jail and the criminal justice system that we all, I'll be contacting the mayor about that. And we're going to be actively engaged in evaluating our criminal justice system and private bail, and that's a top priority that we'll be engaged in over the next six months.
Thank you, Judge. We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Absolutely.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Janice? An ordinance adopting an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Sebastian County and Sebastian County Mental Health Catchment Area within operations of the, or within operations of the Sebastian County Regional Crisis Stabilization Unit serving Sebastian, Crawford, Franklin, Logan, Scott, and Hope Counties and each municipality in that six-county region, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'd like a motion, wait, the second, third reading?
No, this is the third.
Third, third reading.
That was the third reading.
Okay.
Sebastian, yes. I wonder.
Does it, uh, because normally I think there's a third day in, uh...
I think it does affect you thirty days after.
So, do we need to make it?
There's an emergency clause in the title, we have to...
Is it? In section three as well?
We need to make it?
We have to adopt emergency.
Do you want to adopt and make it affect you with my publication? You can do that.
I thought that's what the emergency clause did.
Well, by the time we got to the process.
You have to, you have to act.
What's it?
I make a motion, we enact emergency.
Same.
That person, not person, the motion's second to that, just call.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. And I look forward to continuing to have dialogue about the criminal justice system challenges in order to keep here the mayor and council, because, um, we have some issues in our criminal justice system and hopefully, um, we can make some headway over the next, next year doing...
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Uh, new business number three is planning and building apartments, confirmation of John F. Engorder as planning commissioner. I'm sorry, I skipped. Sorry. City attorney, Ted Robson.
We've been talking about this real, real replacement erosion control ordinance, and, um, I've attempted to kind of put together what we had. I, I came to the conclusion that I didn't like what we had, period, and it was going to be difficult to merge them together. So, what I've done is I've researched, uh, the city of Fort Smith and some other cities across the state of Arkansas, as well as taking into consideration the comments of concerns that the council has, uh, addressed in the previous meetings, and I've tried to consolidate that all into one ordinance, but unfortunately is a total thing involved. Uh, but what I would like to do, since we don't have all the council here, is just put it off the reading by first title, or by title only, uh, and, uh, then let the other council, once you guys study on it before the second reading, if you have some changes or modifications to it at that time, we can address those. But I think I addressed everything that you guys wanted, plus something here, and I just think that this is a better ordinance than we had before, if I just made the changes that you wanted. I think this goes in more detail, and I would certainly ask somebody to review this with great detail, make sure that I'm not running afoul of something that they've already got in place. So, with that said, I would just request that you put it off the reading.
I'd like a motion to put this on the first reading, but title only.
Second. A motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Pow?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Janice? An ordinance for killing ordinance number zero seven dash zero seven, and ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-four, regulating grading, filling, and cutting or similar activities, which alone or in combination may cause landslide, flooding, degradation of water quality, erosion, erosion, sedimentation, and potential damage to utility lines, declaring an emergency and programs.
Have a review of it on section, section ten, is that, you said you're looking at other ordinances in state enforcement, is that consistent with some of theirs, or that would just be me and this?
No, no, no other city has applied that. I put that in there because that was, uh, was discussed.
Because I was once speaking about it.
Yes. And, uh, you were going to speak about the title, it was in there, but I put that in there, but I found that no other place that required it's logging.
Could you tell how they, uh...
It's really section eleven because you have section four of that.
Yeah, it's a title, it's really a section eleven.
Eleven and the next one's twelve.
Yeah, I already put a title there.
How's that go, I mean, is it forty?
They, they have the same, uh, basically the same language, other than, uh, the logging. Uh, of course, you know, city enforcement has a, uh, city administrator, and they have different entities that manage the, uh, enforcement of this, and so that's different from theirs. I've kind of put that off as some of the planning departments, um, to address that. Um, several of the cities have their city engineer, unfortunately, we don't have a city engineer on staff that, uh, really goes into this. Um, but we're, I think we're heading in that direction, we're probably going to, uh, in the next ten or fifteen years, it's going to be a necessity that we have upon.
We're pretty much having, wondering if they're now, so...
This is a start in the right direction, I believe. But, uh, it incorporates, I think, everything that would be prior ordinances, but goes into greater detail and has a little bit more regulation, um, than what you had before, and I just thought overall this was a better mechanism to follow what we want to follow.
Is this something the planning commission should look at as well?
I, I would, yeah, I would encourage the planning commission that some of the guys that critique it, uh, if they think that it's running, uh, a lot on some other ordinance or regulations that we have, certainly, I've had my feelings hurt, so we need to take this up.
Well, our meeting's coming up in two weeks anyway, so that would work well with the second reading.
I, I think it pretty much goes in line with our, with what we already have, but it's more detailed.
It's all I have.
I didn't get the, uh, fines of this high school term on it, or the, uh, permit pieces high school term on it, but, uh, state law limits what we can do there. I did the best I could.
That was my question as well, is, you know, the, the violations, uh, and penalties. If, if someone goes out there and starts digging on the side of the hill without coming to get a permit, a five-hundred-dollar fine, and you go, we can't put, we can't put the hill back, you know?
Well, it actually continues, uh, the continuing nature, uh, rapidly goes to fifty per day, that remains in that condition. So, you do have a little bit of...
A little bit of absence, too.
Yeah. You know? But there is no surefire effort to avoid what you're copying, but you just have to have, um, good folks out here where they monitor what's going on in the neighborhood and shut them down before it gets there.
Some bell is to have, we'll take this hour.
I do a one-day plan, but...
Take as much as you say, I have pictures, but... Any other questions or thoughts from the council on this? Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to what I thought was number two and three, Bill.
Captain Mayor, Mr. Stewart, uh, the first confirmation that I've asked you to approve is for, uh, a position that's coming up in the, in the planning commission. Uh, Mr. Kingish is resigning, and, uh, I was, reached out to the community for people that would be interested in serving on the planning commission. But John F. Engorder approached me, and I talked with the mayor about it, and I think he'd make a good addition to the planning commission, and I would ask for your approval.
I'd like a motion to appoint John F. Engorder to the planning commission.
Second. Motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Pow?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
I'd like a motion to appoint Ms. Tanya Taylor to, oh, we didn't vote if you had. For sake of...
Don't waste a quick, don't waste a quick. We're good, we're good, I thought we were about to...
I'd make a motion to appoint Ms. Tanya Taylor to the planning commission.
Who?
Maybe I need to make more enthusiasm. I'd like a motion to appoint Ms. Tanya Taylor.
Say it again.
This is for the position that you all approved for additional commission several months ago, so...
That's very good choice.
And you can, uh, the, the, our next meeting, Tanya can sit on the, uh, commission and, and, uh, start her...
I'd like to see the female, and you, you went through with it, so I was really, really appreciative of that.
I agree.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Have we got a good one?
Yeah.
Ms. Pow?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Um, yes.
You have to give an exception.
Shout out.
Microphone's yours, you have thirty-seven.
I am so honored, thank you, and I, I...
Oh, it's a great honor.
Thank you, thank you, counsel.
Number five, water distribution budget resolution for water leak repair. Who's opposing?
As you may have heard, we have a town on this leak sometime. And so, we're asking, the leak has been repaired, I'll be glad to go into a breach and tell you the lie. Um, just cross-discovered that we had a large amount of water on the county floor. We began a very long, uh, using a lot of resources, a long search for a leak. It turned out to be in a creek, uh, between, um, Doc Burke's property by the walking trail, I guess behind, uh, Farmer's Bank in that area. We had leak specialists looking for it, they couldn't find it, we searched and searched. At any rate, uh, called the contractor, when they were calling him, he was there within thirty minutes, that was on Thursday. We discovered him on Thursday. There were been thirty minutes on Friday, he showed up again, we dug a test hole thirteen feet deep to determine if it was, uh, if there were rod guards, uh, if there were suitable conditions for boring. Uh, lied to the boring contractor. On Saturday, he sent employees to power a wall and pick up materials. On Monday, he showed up with two full bar crews on Monday and Tuesday, and the leak was repaired, and it was a total of fifty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's a lot of money, but it was a very, it was two hundred and forty feet of, uh, HDP that was, uh, directly bored underneath the creek. Much better product than what was in place. They don't know what caused the leak, so, so, it's a little bit of a creek, it's in the concrete, um, which could have had a center.
Would you say better product than what we had in place? And, you know, as we replace lines, if we could, wouldn't it be cheaper to increase our construction standards on some of these creek crossings and not have to do something like this?
I have called out, and our standards, well, I believe is the best product, and it is that product, which is HDP, which stands for high-dissipable wet leak. Or Duct Liner, engineers love Duct Liner, and they have some very HDP flowing. I don't, it's put indirectly, and, uh, you know, there is nothing, there's nothing foul sector of perfect HDP, it's, it's like the stake, you know, twenty-four probably, when they go through it. So, may leak on one area or the other, but it won't leak over time, so...
We're taking that as CSUT, it's county sales use tax.
City sales.
City sales use tax. That's the permanent longer chain.
Right.
And increasing machine hire later, machine hiring.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Have a motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Eric Kinsler?
Yes.
Yes.
And before you yell, I mean, if you could, it's because, how long did you find the leak in a, in a creek bed?
It took some time. We, we had, we were ever to the water plant, uh, right across, Kenny Northsee and myself, we got it at four o'clock in the morning, but there was no water usage. We had such a large area we were looking in, and, um, we had so many numbers, and we had also, there were so many other things going on, we just put a new pump station in, and we were having some trouble with. And I think when we were down in the creek looking in this area, the pumps were on because we were having manually running them, so the leak wouldn't show up as much. We had leak specialists right at that side, they didn't hear it, didn't see it, because it was in the concrete, so it was a very unique situation. But we had a very exhausting search. We were out all over the place, going through the woods, going through pastures, and we also had to brush hog, the grass was as high, we, we had to brush hog on Burke's field, and we had to cut, we, that's also a thing we did the, the day after discovering, we had to cut, uh, the branch, the, uh, trees down around the banks so that we could even see it. You had to be standing just the right spot, it was difficult, and we felt like it wasn't like it was going to get a creek. But there are lots of drainage in creek water area, for instance. There are numerous little creeks and so on, so. And then we even tested out the lake, our other fear was, could it be out underneath the lake? Which we recently replaced that with HDP product, we didn't think it likely, but we had to rule it out. So, it was very, it was a nuisance, it was a lot of work. You know, four o'clock in the morning allowed us to narrow our scope, we were in such a big area. Once we narrowed our scope, then we just backtracked backwards and so. We had some consulting engineering firm also, but it was challenging. I will say this, it's the first one in my twenty-five years that I couldn't find.
Again, I commend the, you know, the Water and Waste Department to find, you know, the major leak in a creek coming out. I think that's very hard, and I appreciate you all's diligence and your perseverance in finding that and in the long run saving the city money. Thank you.
Thank you, I, we were about, we were wondering at odds with each other, are you sure we got this much? Or the numbers, or I don't know, because we just couldn't believe it, that much water was laying, it was a vast amount of water, significant amount of water. Couldn't believe it, it just wouldn't show up, so, but thank you.
Someone raise my water bill? Only yours.
I can get your bill for fifty-three thousand.
I do want to say this, that was an expensive pickup, but there are things out there that we can have in the water systems and we can have outsourced. And a good contractor did a great job, he showed up just like that and had two crews. And it should have actually been more money, tried to keep within the scope of his initial estimate, and so I appreciate that. But these things can happen again, and it can be very costly.
Thank you, I think a leak in a creek equals a needle in a haystack, probably.
Especially with the rain.
With rain, yeah. To quote Mr. Stewart, a leak in a creek is a.
An egg.
An egg for a week.
An egg.
Wow. You didn't think I was going to do that? Tell me something I want to tell you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Moving on, number six, Water Waste Department's mission recovery ordinance, first reading.
If I could just ask, Mr. Powell, you asked about the standards, and I know that's something, you know, Tim is very sensitive to because he tries to make sure we get the best quality product in the ground. To that very point, if you remember, two years ago, we replaced the lines under Jack Nolan for that very reason. He wanted to make sure that the lines, the integrity of those lines were going to last. And he wasn't absolutely sure that what was in the ground was going to last. So, we went ahead and hit the bullet and replaced that with the same product, the same kind of product that he used, that they used. I would notice this is recovery ordinance for the Harvey Center, one of the commercial quarter work. So, you should have that ordinance in front of you. It's very similar to the one that we had for Tinsper, on fifty water line across down Tinsper for truckers supply. Section three, I think, unfortunately, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I don't have a copy of it. But I think it's section three that talks about the details of it. I'll get this one.
Thank you.
Come back prepared next time, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. I'll do that. This was brought for or brought to you, Tanya, for review, so he's, he's giving his, well, I seen on it, he actually created what they did in section two. We provided section two for his review, but he's not allowed the ordinance, so. But section two is the need of the recovery, which is based on discussions Tim had with the planning department and Sunny Bay, making sure that we could figure out the best way to apply the fees. And what was, what was decided was to make sure it was tied to the building permit. So, when they actually get a building permit, that's when they'll pay their fees for water and sewer for us to go to recoup the money.
On the picture on your last page, it shows Tinsper Center Street highlighted, and we already have an ordinance for that, right?
We have an ordinance for the south side of that, correct.
Does this conflict with that ordinance?
This is the north side, that's what it's at.
Okay, I'm looking in wrong, okay. Sorry.
North is up.
And then we also have north and south on Denver Street as well.
Okay, I see, yeah, you're on the north side of Tinsper, and that ordinance applied only to the south side.
That's correct.
So, there wouldn't be a conflict.
That's correct, and understand this is only phase one, that we're going to be working on first. This ordinance is more than that, but we're only going to be working on phase one, which we talked about the last meeting. You know, from Tinsper to Denver is going to be our first phase. This ordinance is the longer lasting ordinance for the entire event.
Tinsper to Denver on the east side of the road, or?
That's correct, on the east side of the road, that's going to be phase one.
That's phase one.
Right. That's under engineering, correct.
Is this applied to Tinsper seventy-one, along seventy-one? Or is all of this on this map?
Well, it's all of that on the map, the ordinance is, but I'm telling you that all we're going to work on is right now is phase one.
But this, these fees apply everything.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, once we pass the ordinance, as you go on to the multiple phases, this ordinance applies?
That ordinance applies, we won't have to come back and redo the ordinance every time we do another phase.
And we're in front of the wall this time.
That's correct.
Standing behind the wall.
That's correct, that was the intent.
But as we go forward, you know, we need to, you know, increase these fees, you know, to twenty thousand or?
Section three.
In section three, oh, is that it's in there? Okay, future, all right.
You're just, I can look at this later, you're just asking if we put on this first reading.
First reading by title, there's no emergency. Correct.
I make a motion we put this on the first reading for that one.
Second. The motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes. Yes.
An ordinance recouping cost extended on the extension of water and sewer lines along Marshall Corner, always seventy-one south, as depicted on the attached plaque in front of the.
Thank you. Moving on. Thank you. Absolutely, Water Waste Department Commission confirmation, Mr. Bailey, fourth commission member, redoing.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey is up for renewal, so this is confirmation for renewal.
I make a motion we confirm John Bailey.
Second.
Motion to second to confirm.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion we confirm Teresa Burtichat, another woman, that's really, that's nice.
Let me add one thing to that, number eight. She is replacing Ms. Mizell, and her term ends on December the eighteenth of this, or December of eighteen, so this year. So, when we do her confirmation, if we could go ahead and confirm her beyond for the next.
Four-year term.
Is it eight or two or four?
I think it's four, isn't it?
It's four-year, okay. So, otherwise I'm going to be back in here next month.
I'm in my motion for the following term.
The remainder of this term and the following term.
The remainder of this term and the following.
Second, confirmation and confirmation.
I see second.
Yes. Motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
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 Any other questions to me?
Thank you, sir. Please, please, very pleased with Water Waste Department Commission's doing with these moving and moving things.
You also know we're engineering for valid issue, so we'll let you know. And all that's been budgeted for twenty eighteen. We're actually, as it stands right now, we're going to spend a million or keep half those expenditures for twenty eighteen, so for twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen is spent.
You probably said it now, Mr., what's the time frame on that first phase?
Well, we're in engineering, so I don't know.
Okay, you're in engineering, okay, so we won't know for a while.
We won't know, I was hoping that it would be done by the twenty-sixth meeting, but I'm not sure if we ain't got the status on that one yet. Our engineers are being a little slow, so we're going to have to have our own session.
The remaining commissioners are who, yourself?
Myself, Dr. Bartmark, Mr. Bailey, and now just.
There's only four?
And Stephen Westphal.
Stephen Westphal, there's five.
Another thing, this proposed, you know, along seventy-one, is that coinciding with our annexation?
It's consistent with Sunny's plans. That was under your request. You'll remember to me to go.
Your request, don't make me up on that.
Should be a project. Hey, Steve, while you're there, this we have in our, just confirmation on this amendment to the conditions statement by laws.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's on there, they can go before the commission, yeah.
So, it'll come back to us?
I don't think it has to, I think those amendments are to the bylaws, they're voted on by the, by the commission.
That's correct, the modern commission is self-regulating, caps its public.
But that's, that's just a discussion point at the next meeting and then presented or discussed as a commission.
So, just for my clarification, pardon my ignorance, how, tell me how all that works right now? Like who, Tim, Greg, the water office, folks here? And then I guess whoever works for Tim and Greg.
All of the water production, all of water distribution, water office, and sewer plant, reported through Tim and Greg, and then up to the commission.
Tim and Greg report to the commission?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought a lot of this one, I thought.
I was just going to note that they, I've been really impressed with the water commission. Last day, I was with Steve, kind of spearheaded. I've dealt with other cities that the water commission has been around here, just because of lack of leadership. I was telling Steve the other day that I made a lot of money off the city of Vina because their water department, the water commission was so efficient and grand that nobody was really watching the employees, and they got some sexual harassment and some religious harassment, and there was nobody really held anybody accountable. And so I think the commission that you have now does a really good job. Steve is in my office or on my phone probably four or five nights per month, and he's the top of things and keeping things on the line out. I see progress where with the city of Vina, some of the other cities that I've had dealings with, I see catastrophe. But I think you've got a good water commission.
I just want to say that when you weren't here, Daniel, when the water commission was created, but when it was created, I took the ordinance you wrote back from Gary Campbell's administration. And I did not change a word, and that's before, so it's the one you wrote.
So, it's my fault?
It's your fault even though you didn't pass it.
Well, one thing that I was wondering, because I, again, I appreciate y'all coming to meetings and reporting, you know, the activities and stuff. But I was just, you know, wondering if I can get that, you know, this is before us, you know, just by, I guess, happenstance or whatever, because it's not really. What I was wondering is, I know we kind of have input when it's first started, like saying, you wrote it up, you know, and then we worked, and then Rod just redid it or whatever and presented. But I was wondering, as far as, you know, I mean, we have parks, we have, you know, planning commission, we have, you know, the fire department. Now, is there, you know, anybody that we do see, you know, amendments or changes, you know, to the council? Or is it, you know, forever just, you know, out of our, you know, purview, you know, now?
I'm not sure, I'm understanding what your question is.
Well, I'm just saying, I just want, I was just trying to just so that we know kind of what's, you know, still a rest inside the structure, you know, of the, of the each commission. I mean, do they just go ahead and alter their bylaws and then we, you know, not really have any, you know, input to, you know, the council?
That's not by operation of our ordinance and by state law. State law says that when you create a modern commission, there is self-governing portion of the city. They hire their employees, they fire their employees, they submit a budget to you and you fund it. And so to the extent that the council has say-so, then it would be, if you have an ordinance and go back the fastest way, do it, or you can just not fund it. Those are your two options there, but as far as having to come before you to change those items, legally, they don't have to do that. I would encourage them, if they're making items, that they come and tell you, hey, we're doing this, and I think that's what they've been doing to this point. And I think that's why Steve comes every month to give a report, is to update those things.
I mean, mechanism of control is.
That's correct.
And you always have that silver bullet to just, a non-ordinance involved.
That's correct.
We can abolish it by ordinance.
It was created by ordinance and it can be abolished by.
Record a vote.
But other than that, that's the way I, and that's the way I remember is that state law dictates what they do. I mean, once you start it, we just kind of take our hands off of it.
I would agree with Mr. Hamby, I mean, I just, you know, I was set as in the water committee like that and was involved in that a lot. And we had, you know, we went through several volatile years, we had to say, opposing once from firing because someone got mad. And, you know, here we got to put up with Doug in another four years.
I've been around a long time, I've had some of those meetings with Daniel, where we were looking at the coal line issues there. It was a playful for the city council to undergo that, and it's always a political item to increase the water rates and sewer rates and so forth. But it takes a little off your plate, I think they're really good at funding it, and if they come back and say we need a water and sewer rate, it's like, really cool. Water commission.
It's ran more like this.
And I think it's very efficient at this point.
I think one of the things you're going to see for twenty nineteen that's going to be different is the commission agreed to add a non-voting commissioner, which would be a councilman. And so we have asked Mr. Brown if he would be willing to join us, and he agreed to do so. We just need to confirm that at the next meeting for twenty nineteen, he would be coming as a non-voting member, just to be abreast of everything that's going on and what we're trying to accomplish and communicate that with me back to this, to this council. If you guys are concerned about something, then, you know, the best thing to do is either come to a commission meeting and let's talk about it, or call me. And then we can work through any issues or concerns that you might have. So, I don't know if there was another thought process you were going to with the question?
Just curious if there was anything that you want to tell us or any clarification about it.
Well, I just, yeah, I agree with the comments made by Mike and by Daniel, I've been very pleased and, I will say one, Mike, that it has relieved, you know, some burden, you know, off of us by, you know, looking at the rates, just like you said here, you know, these, you know, fees here for, you know, future, you know, paths. And we expand our system to recoup those costs, you know, and, you know, do it in a way that, again, that we're keeping a, you know, just a well-run, very efficiently run, you know, water sewer system. Because, you know, there's, certainly don't want us to be, you know, out of compliance or anything like that by some, you know, other possible municipalities or else. I really do appreciate, you know, the hard work and everything that y'all do, and, so, thank you.
Well, our meeting before last was a financial review with Tom, and he laid out financials, he talked about needing. needing or not needing an increase, a rate increase, we determined it's probably not needed at this point in time, although, as you continue to look at increases across operational expenses, uh, we have to operate in, in the black or state law, so we're gonna have to do something eventually, but we're not gonna be doing it for twenty, at least for the next year or so, um, we're looking at some other options to maybe look at revenue changes, and we're looking at options to control expenses, so. But right now, we're just spending one point four million of that city sales use tax in trying to continue our, our, um, infrastructure upgrades and advancement for Highway Seventy-One, uh, replaces if we don't have sewer, um, so if you have any questions, go through, give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raver. Uh, the second agenda is now is the department reports and questions from council. By the way, let me correct something that I did earlier, uh, is we call upon Mr. Bell, the chairman of the Parks Commission, Mr. Joe Goldstein is the newly appointed, chairman of the Parks and Recreation Department, so congratulations to you, and I will call you next time, Mr. Bell. Thanks, sir.
Is he in?
I said, I'm gonna answer tonight, no, 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 just kidding. Did you wanna, did you wanna address council, Mr. Goldstein?
Give me a brief summary of what's going on?
Absolutely.
You can only take about an hour.
Good, no problem.
Counsel, there, Mr. Hamby. Couple of short items, pillars that were replaced on the square, was damaged by a vehicle. Uh, Eagle, Eagle Scout project, if you look out there, though, post-empto sent along the walkway, uh, image is being edited for review. The Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout project, reaching construction for City Lake is continuing with the mid-November completion date. Playground Trail Extension Project Construction ongoing, and the project is about sixty-five percent complete. Schedule is roughly seventy days ahead of schedule. New parks, new parts for damaged playground equipment was ordered on that order, and a feature is still closed to the public. The East Connector redesigned to follow Highway Ten path as it works, project to be one hundred percent funded by Arkansas Community Federation. Fall Festival is Mel Park on October sixth. Uh, there were twenty events requiring reservations at the Big Oak and Syn Pavilion. Twenty events, one event had a revenue of forty-nine hundred dollars for the month of October.
Thank you, sir, not bad for a facility that was to be boarded up. Insightful, humor. Thank you, sir, uh, I, I went to the late today, actually, with the chief, Brian, out there, kinda looking around at the project, and it's coming along very nicely. I was curious about all the flagstone, um, Nathan, can you tell me how that's, what's all that sport, I mean, I, I know it's been worked on, I know it's all the concrete and the, and the columns for the lights?
Come out on the, uh, uh, we moved the lights to look at the blue, the original blueprints, the lights are gonna be on the other side.
Okay.
But then looking at where the sun's gonna come up that mountain, solar power, so obviously they're, they're gonna capture more being on this side, so that set of blueprints, which is, we just did it as a scuff change quickly, uh, the concrete around the apron, that, that whole area is where it's gonna be flagged, so.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yep, that, that whole area right there, um, will also lead into two trailheads, one going to the other place, so, that, so. That's been the challenge with the rainbow still, that's scheduled, so.
It'll be beautiful.
It's gonna be great.
It's gonna change something that's been kind of an eyesore display for bad people hanging out to, something.
Are there plans to use the old bridge?
He and I have plans to do just that, uh, we have...
Back to walking.
You know, when I, when I accepted that bridge in, in Pope Arkansas back in the day.
Now with the bridge, it's all like...
Oh, oh, yeah, bridge there, yeah, absolutely, I thought you were asking about my bridge.
We did get a quote on it, we did get a rough quote on it, it's around two hundred and fifty, so.
To use this one bridge? Okay, what about your bridge?
Get it, it would, uh, basically get it, get it up out of the water, get it structurally sound, and then, um, basically, you know, that's about it. That's what's on, um...
Does it plank it also?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's fully refurbished, but...
What do you mean, get it up out of the water, like raise the whole bridge?
Yeah, just to, we'll get it for, some of the stuff's not sound, or wouldn't be, basically, cause I mean, I guess the middle, there's missing a beam in the middle, so.
One end of it's all hung.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's some rehab.
It kind of goes like that.
Yeah, and there's some, um, on it too, that kind of, you know, I think two hundred and fifty, you know, was basically a factor in the, and those, but that seems high to me, but it's still, I feel where it's coming from, so.
On the parks list, or, and maybe, uh, you're talking to Mr. Goldstein, but where does that rank? Is that something that you'd like to see done, get the trailer across? You know, how, may, maybe that's something the parks could, uh, what would you go together with A and P Commission, and have A and P Commission looking to be in part way or something? Doing it together.
Right, and that's, that's something we're looking at too, from a budget standpoint.
We're pretty good about giving all of our money away in A and P Commission, but there's nothing wrong with saving, you know, saving up for a plan or project. And, uh, but that takes some discipline.
Yeah, and that's an investment that, you know...
But maybe, maybe we could look at, this is our goal for three years, you know, and we could put back some in A and P Commission, and y'all could squirrel away your part, and some of that's still coming from us, from, from A and P Commission.
That'll have a return on it.
But I, I, you know, that, that's just gonna be such a community deal when that happens, you know. If you look at what people even take pictures of and put on Facebook and stuff, you know, the, the tower, that's, I mean, that's one of those icons of our community. Even some of these scout civilians, I mean, you see scout civilians in there, and, uh, you go, you know, it's kind of weird how that kind of turned into something that's now an icon of the community. But that bridge, that would definitely be an icon of our community, and maybe, maybe we could pull it together, and, uh, you know, I don't, we don't have enough discipline on council to try and put money into it. We could work on it next year's budget, I mean, y'all could kind of for, you know, kind of force us to take a look at it. But it would be nice to, uh, kind of say, you know, council, if you could put this amount, and we could put this amount, A and P could put this amount, we could do this three years. Somebody's gonna have to provide that leadership to go in and push that.
Thanks, sir, excited about it, it's gonna look good out there. Uh, other department heads are here, obviously, if you need, would like to ask.
You gotta tell us about...
Oh, the other bridge is lying, lying in the grass behind the street department, unless they south, took it up for scrap, scrap metal, I don't know. Did you need a piece, okay, that bridge is laying on their investment ever since we inherited it, I guess, from the highway department. Uh, it, it will be an expensive endeavor, no doubt, to take it anywhere, but it can be done, I know that bridge is ninety foot long, the stretch of lake there going from, basically, to the right of the, uh, boat ramp over to, to that pavilion that you're referring to, I think it would be an ideal place for that bridge to keep people from having to almost go on Mount Harmony Road, on the trail as it is, but I mean, it's working, but I think that'd just be a great thing, I mean, it would, it would take, uh, the approaches on both ends to do that, so I, again, a big...
Is it in pieces, the bridge?
It is, it's two sides lying, and then there's all the beams that, yeah, it's in pieces, but the two sides are intact.
It would take some abutments out of the lake.
Right, that's what, yeah.
And that, that would be the hard part.
It would be the hard part, I mean, I know they do those things all the time. I don't think that was gonna float. But, you know, and it may be even that you would want or need to block off that little area to, to get it somewhat not dry, but I don't know, I don't, nothing in the bridge.
Is that little piece right there, is that actually inlet, does water cut in right there?
Uh, it goes under the...
It comes under the bridge from Mr. Edwards' lake?
It does, yeah.
Under the, under Mount Harmony?
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what runs into his lake, overflows, and then runs under Mount Harmony into ours?
You couldn't build it, or, damn it, cross it, shut it off.
You'd make Mr. Edwards' man.
Probably would have to have a, not, I think, whatever, I think so.
He's gonna get Troy after his house plays, and we're all okay.
He used to show up at our water meetings, our, uh, see, we were in a place.
If, if you would like to, I don't know how many of you seen, uh, like, old turkey birds, those are up close, you can go out there now, and, and witness about three hundred of them, I think. There's about four deer carcasses on the other side of the road, and they're attracting...
There's no such thing as North American buzz, or vultures.
Vultures, excuse me.
I've got my game of fish records.
Oh, hell, okay.
My eyes will confirm it.
We were out there today, and I thought, well, this is some of the birds or something, anyway, but it's gonna be a really neat project, and they're doing, they're doing a lot of cool stuff out there, so. Okay, uh, Mr. Bell's here, Chief Ryan.
I'd like to ask Sunny...
Yep.
About, uh, you know, Steve, where the, you know, the water commission's got, you know, kind of a group of, you know, water and sewer coming out there on the annex, I was kinda saying, where do we stand as far as, you know, looking at the annexation?
The annexation, uh, has been, the map had been drawn, the legos have been, uh, put in there, the Arkansas GIS is going over the legos, make sure that they are true, and and we haven't left out any, uh, any holes or anything like that. Once that's done, then it will go to the planning commission, will come to you guys for any changes, uh, any additions and additions or whatever, and then the decision will be made. It's gonna have to be done in an election, whether you wanna do it in a special election in our way for the judge, so, that's kind of where we are now. We're also, I've got the draft copies of the, uh, new land use ordinances, uh, I can get that on hand, and I'll bring, again, it'll be to the planning commission and to you guys, and then also, that'll make the change of comprehensive plan, uh, map, and then we'll do the planning commission and to you guys also.
And so do you think we have a, kind of a, you know, would we be set for, maybe if we did have speculation, you know, like in the spring, or?
I'd say probably, that's something that follows this year would be easy. You know, I would say we, we wanna make sure all of our Ts are crossed, our Is are dotted, and, and so we're being very cautious. And two, since the last time that we did this, uh, the state law has changed off completely, I mean, uh, it's got to go through a lot of, uh, uh, different organizations before it's approved, uh, they've made some changes on what, uh, are the requirements from the city, you know, when you do annex, uh, basically, if you have to provide what you say you want to provide, if you're on the play, you're gonna provide, you don't have to provide, and so that's, that's kind of what it's come down to.
You know, I, I, you know, I think, you know, water and sewer, you know, I've stated, is the, the lifeblood, you know, of any town, and, you know, we can kind of see that as, uh, development out there, you know, west of town, you know, when we did get water and sewer out there, and how much we can grow there, and so I, I think that, again, we're doing their part, and I'd like to see the, the city do our part, because again, I think, you know, you've been on time, you know, you said too, it had a report that, you know, cities that, that don't expand, you know, or raise, you know, uh, then they, they don't, you know, reach out.
Well, we have mixed family, I mean, we've run out of, uh, buildable land, just about, I mean, uh, we, you know, now, the east side of town is probably the most buildable property that we have, that has water and sewer, you know, the terrain is good and all that, we've, we've got the issue with the property up above Maple Ridge, it looks like it's kind of, you know, go back to La La Land on it, because of the, uh, inability of the health department to work with the developer, and so, you know, I, I was looking forward to that kicking off, but, uh, I don't know if it's gonna happen now.
And you said it's an issue for the health department?
Basically, you know, the, uh, and these guys are better, probably better than me, but they, you know, we're requiring a, a water tank up there, and, uh, the developer, one, is, is looking at a hundred and seventy-five houses, and so you have to build a tank that will provide water and fire protection for a hundred and seventy-five houses, and the health department said, no, you can't build it that big. You build it for the state of Phase One, which is thirty-five houses, and so, you know, it's, uh, common sense to say, you build a tank, you can only fill it up, of course, in a way, but, you know, I'm not... That's, like I said, that's these guys' expertise, not mine, but, uh, you know, I was, uh, you know, some of the problems, tell them, the, the, open the top of the mode to see how that platform works, and that's how we could do this thing, but, uh, apparently, they, they don't see it my way, and I know Chief, uh, Brian has, uh, talked to the state fire marshal, and, and, but, there's still some conversation going on about it, but...
I heard he had that property for sale.
Yeah. He has listed it, uh, a hundred thousand dollars of what it shows, listed.
Yeah, was he?
It's all right.
It's thirteen thousand dollars an acre.
I'm not a player in that.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's kind of a big, big area, I mean, it'll lay bigger out some way. To, uh, provide water, fire, safety, no permit to be used.
Thanks, sir, on, on the issue of annexation, we've been having some conversation with Mayor-elect George McGill, Fort Smith, and the city administrator, uh, name always gets me, I believe, of, of Carl, about getting together, actually sitting down and talking about this, you know, before, like, this imaginary line drawn in the sand, you know, it used to be bare all the way, it used to be somewhere else, so, we agreed after elections, and everybody kind of got settled, and then we, we did together, talked about it, and so Mr. Bell and other people would be involved with that, and try to, we wanna be on the same page, not that we're asking permission to go north, but certainly, we don't wanna try to do something that they're just gonna totally fight right off the bat, so we're trying to do our best together, and as, as Mayor-elect George McGill preaches, and as a reasonable, and we all think that way too, so we're trying to get together.
I just want us to be able to draw the line first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I told him we had one, I should have had one, yeah, so, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other department heads you'd like to hear from?
I like, finding it, hey, is that all right?
Absolutely.
We've been trending up on our sales and use tax for the last six months, other than one month.
Correct.
Is, uh, of course, we're, we've got, we've budgeted some of that projection, oh, we've budgeted flat.
Budgeted flat.
So we're looking...
Four point five percent right now.
Yeah, we're looking nice. Did you ever figure out what happened in April? I never could understand April, why'd you just take such a note, Dad?
City, uh, county sales taxes is up one point six percent, so the vote trend is up. The interesting thing is your city sales and use tax over the last three years is roughly looking at a three percent increase year over year. Right now, our projected revenues for our budget process, and we're budgeting flat, with 2018 revenues in 2019, if we continue to trend at the current three percent, or a little higher, you're gonna, you're gonna look at a, a same situation or similar to, uh, what the actual will look like against the budget.
So are all the departments trying to gobble that up, or are we gonna have, we did, are we keeping it a secret, not telling the police or fire?
Too late.
Too late, too late?
Yeah, I just already know that fire just turned in there, but it's today. Yeah, I just already know the fires that turned in there by just today, so.
Would you like to paint the old antique bridge?
Oh, man. Uh, you'll have your stay in December.
In December.
So you can car out your.
Please.
Do you read something good question, though? A point of discussion is, uh, right now, uh, we have, I have received police, animal control, planning, water, sewer, fire budgets. Uh, water and sewer is ready for final approval or renewed by the commission and is able to come to you for you to be able to do a study session or budget session with. They're rather large, so usually do them as one whole unit. Uh, street, parks in general are the last three that, um, general will be last because of department impact to general. Um, I have to see what they're gonna be proposing in order to be able to advise how we wanna work generals. Um, street being relatively new, I'm working with him on the process and how to write the flows and how it works. Parks has a commission that's gonna have to review there, so with the change in the helm, we're gonna be looking at, hopefully doing that this month. But what I wanted to point out to you is my timeline for when I think the budget will be ready for you to final approve it. Um, you're not obviously approving it now, but I'd like to set aside some days for you to start thinking about setting budget review sessions in December. My goal is to have all these ready to bring to you in December so that, you know, at your December meeting, we may have to, unless you're gonna do an emergency meeting in December to approve it before January one, for you to be able to approve it at your first meeting in January, which means you'll do a, an emergency, um, what is it called?
Temporary.
Yeah.
Temporary budget.
But really not going all the way to January third first. You'll just approve it at your first meeting in the month of January. And that's significantly sooner than you normally do it.
So I say you realize you're breaking tradition.
I know, and I hate doing that, my gosh. But, uh, that was part of one of, uh, Mayor Kinsel's campaign promises.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah. One of your campaign promises was we're gonna do the budget sooner. Actually, I think that was my goal, was to try to get it.
That's all behind you now. All the promise for the past.
See, he's already forgot.
Oh, you restart.
I know. So I'd like to at least let you start thinking about how many you wanna have and we should start planning some dates for December. And the, the theory behind that is if I got the dates, I can push the deadlines back to the people who are still looking at getting their budgets in. Yeah, I have to have them by this day because we are going to the city council on this day. And then hopefully we'll have a completed package for the deadline that we do that year. That's my goal. So if you wanna entertain some dates in December, I know you're gonna be looking only through the first three weeks because of the holidays, so I don't think you wanna do anything between Christmas and New Year. So, and you'll have a play in that if we do the, at the December meeting, you go ahead and do the temporary, um, the budget extension, whatever it's called.
Well, I mean, you can lock out about three departments at the time, can't we, or? Like two, two or three, depending on what they are, you know, like ones that are chapluder, like planning, that's easy.
Planning might be a little challenge.
A little different this year.
Because of the, uh, because of the permits, because they're not trending where they need to be. You know, I've significantly lowered that so that it hasn't impacted what your deficit would be that is funded by the general. So you gotta look at that. You also did reduce county sales tax percentage to general last year because they, I mean, to a planning, because they actually were budgeting a surplus based on their revenue projections. So you then took that money and gave it to parks. You still have the ability to play that county sales tax percentages in order to give them additional funding back, but you're gonna have to pull it from somebody else, so.
Well, uh, is the.
Next meeting, is it falling on parayings?
We actually discussed that tonight. We, we got a, uh, a request from Dr. Lee Johnson, who is in Little Rock tonight. He thinks he's a big shot already, so he's already down there with the big shots in state. But he will not be available. We can move until Tuesday, I believe, correct, the fourth, because of the Monday night Christmas parade. He is not gonna be available at all, and I certainly would like to have him here at the last meeting of, of this, um, council membership. So I would suggest if, if you guys are excited to be, maybe move that to the tenth, which is the month, is that? The rule? So let's, all right, you, so let's move the council meeting to December the tenth, seven P M. And then, and I would suggest, is, is, um, suggesting that we look at a couple of dates here while we're at it. And the best way to have these budget study sessions is to have a crock pot of taco soup.
You'll have it.
To get these guys here. So, uh, and these are open meetings, by the way, to the departments, so you can sort of kind of partake and you can bring a box of crackers or whatever. So what's, what's the desire of the council? What, what?
What's the intent?
I'm not talking about budget, budget.
Well, I say, any time during that week, you know, where the, you know, uh.
Yeah, we'll do the council the tenth, but the budget study session is why I'm asking.
Yeah, and I'm saying that we have the tenth.
Okay, the thirteenth, or you wanna, you wanna do it Wednesday night? I know that's church night for some.
I'm good the thirteenth.
The thirteenth's on the Thursday. Okay.
You wanna do it on the previous Thursday, too, then?
The sixth.
The sixth.
Uh, I'm good, whatever.
I'm, I'm probably good for that Thursday.
So let's go ahead and schedule it.
So twelve three and twelve thirteen? I mean, twelve six.
Twelve six or twelve thirteen?
But I just said, you want the, which department?
Water, sewer first, because they're the closest one.
What time are we going to do these?
Six o'clock.
Six?
It's time for dinner.
Yeah.
Six o'clock, both, both evenings?
Six o'clock.
Okay, so water, sewer, first night with, you want somebody else with you, you think? I think that's too much.
That's your call.
I believe the request this morning an department had be was to follow, what was it you had, chief?
Yeah. We want to be active fire.
Active fire department, since you're in, we were going with all that.
We can do emergency services that together if you wanna do that by our place. And, um, street is big, so you would want a couple of street with some smaller departments, probably planning, animal control.
Are those gonna be in general or still departmental?
Or?
You know, the night we have the general fund, that's all we need then? Is it pertaining?
Yeah, I would prefer that because they're here and they flow into general.
That's what I was thinking.
Quite do. And general would be general, parks, police, animal control, planning and fire all together.
That would need to be one meeting.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
So we need two meals.
And then the only one left you have is street. So that's why I was saying emergency services and street together is one, and then pick the others. So you could do police, animal control, fire, because I think you're still keeping animal control under police.
True.
So police, animal control, fire, and street would be one. And then parks, planning and general is huge.
And all the goals like this line isn't.
So we're saying we need three meetings, right? Yeah, so.
What's you wanna add, Rick?
Uh, well, the meeting, so six on the, six and thirteen so far, and the tenth is the council.
Sure.
Six ten, thirteen, budget study.
Uh, temporary, I'll do it anyway. So you have room to play in January. You'll just have to have the emergency meetings. If you don't have it all done by Christmas, we go in.
It is the weekend mall, really, in December, so.
You could, and I can present you a completed budget for.
You want, you want to do it the twentieth, just keep them all Thursdays? Uh.
We're waiting for the first three weeks of December.
Okay, twenty.
Uh, well, I mean, yeah, I'm not as bad, you know, it sounds like the final of May, yeah, but you know.
Twentieth?
I'll be over me as the earth to shine.
Or we can do it the Tuesday, you know, the eighteenth? Whatever. Wait, I don't know about this apartment, is that, uh, that's.
Chief, we have a party.
More importantly, when's our Christmas party?
Well, Christmas party.
Eight, eight, four.
That reminds me, the, that's the second.
That reminds Tuesday.
So. I only said the twentieth just because it's not Thursday, easy to remember, but we'll be waiting till the twentieth.
I'm concerned about the annual Christmas shopping.
You can finalize this after tenth meeting. Anything after the thirteenth, you can finalize your date instead. It's not a.
Tentatively the twentieth, let's do that. And then on the tenth, you can look at it, we can look at it. Sound good?
So, and again, the, the sixes would be water, wastewater and, or the.
If we did throw another one in there as well, but water, wastewater, water.
The thirteenth was saying, you know, the police, fire and, uh, animal control.
Correct. And planning, street, parks in general, or something like that.
And all of these are at six o'clock?
Yep. That's water, sewer.
That's a lot of soup.
Yes, that was something.
Something different. Is it? Water street following in Mount.
Chicken and dumplings.
I have the chicken and, she makes great chicken and dumplings. I'll do taco soup, she can do chicken and dumpling.
What day was five on Friday?
We can do water, sewer, street.
Here.
Thirteenth?
I'm sorry.
Water, sewer, street.
Yeah, probably not, yeah.
Much to his passion for you.
Oh, really? That a Tuesday?
That would be the second Tuesday.
No, I thought we're, I thought we were doing it on, we were doing it up and going on a Thursday then, aren't we? I thought we did.
Six thirteen fifteen.
The budget stays is, is her six thirteen, twenty.
Well, when I.
Are those Thursdays or are those Thursday nights?
Those are Thursday nights.
Those are Thursday nights. Those are Thursdays.
Thursday nights.
Why don't we do water, sewer, street?
Well.
Look in December twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Somebody help me with the calendar.
So we're getting ready.
You have him, son?
You and I.
You got two thousand sixteen.
Wow.
They're ready by then.
No wonder he's behind on his budget, he's looking at sixteen gallons.
Lock the doors.
All right.
So water, sewer, street is how.
Water, sewer, street.
Six o'clock.
Water, sewer, street, first one.
Which are?
Police, animal control.
Fire, police, animal control, thirteenth, third?
Which street?
Which street or which?
Yeah, we told the same street.
Daisy, I don't know. What's the, tell me, tell me the order.
Water, sewer, street, and six.
Water, sewer, street, six?
Then we're gonna do police, fire and animal control.
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth is that. And then parks, general, planning will be on the.
Twenty, okay. Are you good?
Well, I used to have these in December.
Somebody take care of that. Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Marsh?
Do I have to be open?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Anybody, anybody got anything for Mr. Gladwin? Or Goodwin, sorry, or Mr. Gladwin, I wanted to give you guys, Street Department. I will tell you that, uh, the overlay on Denver Street is still in the works. We've been approved for two hundred fifty thousand, our grant, obviously. Uh, we think the, the guesstimate of the overage of that project is, is the house, as Main Street was, is around approximately eighty thousand dollars. So that'll be a budget item that will be added to the two hundred fifty that we get from federal or state funding. Uh, that's to repay our overlay, I'm sorry, from tenth through all the way to seventy-one. Uh, there is a little issue of the, uh, the loop in, or the light, the traffic signals that we will be trying to replace with, uh, cameras, is that correct? So, a few thousand dollars, maybe that. But we need to do that water overlay, so we're not gonna undo overlay. Fair enough?
Yes.
Check. Uh, the, the departments wanna say to them, other than what they're asking of, you're good? I have a couple of things, I mean, I know we have a couple more things, uh, council forum, but before we do that, I failed to, is she still here? She's still, I'm sorry. Our new librarian is, is in the audience tonight. This is, uh, Miss Renee Wilson Myers. So please, she, she, uh, Miss, uh, at the current Karen.
Hey.
Baker, thank you, brought Miss Myers to my office to introduce me to her and thank you for being here tonight. And she's been, gonna be a big part of our community. Uh, we're not holding against her, she doesn't live in Dupreeville just yet. Uh, maybe she can get her here, but thank you for being here. Welcome to Greenwood and Spastika County, or I guess it sounds Spastika County Library, so.
You could have introduced her three hours ago.
I know, and she could have left, yeah, I know. I think she wanted to be here. I think she did, yeah, she did. So, uh.
Well, we can make, uh, annex or wherever she lives.
Well, we can do that. Look at it, man. Usually the answer is no.
Well, you're crossing state lines at that.
Yeah, she's, she's actually in that other state. So thank you for being here. Welcome you. I think you're gonna make some good changes over there, so appreciate you.
I have one next one.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, funding for the nonprofits that are city contracted services, all three contracts in this year. We have met with Mr. Ambien, we're looking at the rewriting and doing some tweaks to contracts for area agency, the senior center and boys club. And remember, boys club, Will Koppel will be addressing you at the next meeting. And, uh, I just wanted you to know that all three of those contracts are, uh, being looked at right now, so.
Well, uh, with the contracts being looked at, I'll just say that I'm still in favor of just one year contracts.
I think that's Mr. Marsh who recommended that we select that off the agenda.
I get that. So that's what I'm just.
Thank you. No, we are, the, the three you named, senior citizen center and boys girls club.
There you go.
It is there, I'm sorry, forget it.
I was. It was one thing.
The ones, the ones you have.
Yes, yes. Another announcement too to the council that are updated, uh, animal control, the code enforcement officer, Jared Ricketts has resigned his position. So we are currently advertising that position, and I think there's been three or four, maybe applicants so far. Some good applicants, so we, but that, right now, that position is vacant, so we'll try to fill that as soon as possible. Good things about it. That's all I have, other than one more little thing that the council has.
Council?
Yes, sir, council forum.
What's that?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, uh, to those that expressed interest in the pending vacancy, I guess, which is not vacant yet, is, uh, is Mr. Niles and Mr. Rob and Miss Rice, is that right, Miss Rice? And Mr. Baker. Also, Jim Nukem had contacted me and said he wanted to be considered as well, although he's not here tonight. Uh, I don't know what we may do, but I appreciate y'all all coming forward and, you know, with interest of getting involved. And I just wanted to say, no matter what happens, there's a lot of ways to get involved in the city of Greenwood. And you kinda see it tonight with commission appointments and different things. You know, when I first came in with Daniel, there wasn't that many ways to get involved. But since then, you know, we've spun off so many commissions. There's Parks Commission, it has six members. There's Water and Sewer Commission, Mr. Rattery has six members. There's an A A P Commission with six members. There's Planning Commission, and you saw some appointments on the Planning Commission tonight. Uh, you know, there's obviously the council here with six members. And then there's, that's about thirty people that are directly involved in controlling the direction of Greenwood. And really, it's more than that, because even on the Parks Commission, there's a subset of the Trails Committee, and there may be other things.
Tree board.
There's tree board, there's Trails Committee, which all both have six members. So there's a lot of ways of getting involved. And then there's also the Chamber of Commerce, uh, there's different ad hoc committees, there's Yule Run and, uh, there was a run here recently, uh, Fog does a lot of things in decorating the square. And, you know, there's lots of civic groups, there's a lot of people that go into the direct, setting Greenwood in the direction of making Greenwood a great place to live. And we appreciate all those people. And I just wanted you to make aware, make, make you aware that there's always something. You just have to let us know, let, you know, Sonny know on the Planning Commission, just let people know that you're kinda interested. And I'll kinda put your name back, and it may be months, it may be a year or so, and then call and say, hey, we got a vacancy, we'd like you to serve, if you're still willing. So I just wanted to let you all know that. We don't know what we may, you know, I don't know what the, the body of the, the board here may do with the vacancy, if we'll make an appointment or have a special election, but, uh, I guess that'll be discussed when there is a vacancy.
Well, I, I would just add to that, to that point. Well, I, I would just add to that, to that point, Dr. Johnson's seat is not vacant until he resigns.
That's right.
And we have to declare it vacant, and then we have to take action at the next meeting, right, Mr. Hammy?
You're right. After you declare vacancy, at the next meeting thereafter, when you fill that position.
And he informed me this evening, as I was talking to him, that about not being here tonight, that even plan, his plan is to fulfill his obligation three at the end of this year, which would be obviously through into December, and that vacancy would be in January.
Correct.
So, we would.
You could accept his resignation next month, back to December 31st, and then at the next January meeting, you could fill that position.
Or call for special election.
Or call for special election.
If we went to fulfill that position, would that be one of those kinds of, if, special meeting?
Executive.
Executive session meeting?
I believe that is correct. I'm looking at the law, make sure it hasn't changed, but that needs to be the law. And I know that we did that, what type of, you have it?
Of course you do.
We're done now?
What was the search for?
Well, it looks like, what I was trying to figure out is, in cities of population 20,000 or more, that's where you can do special election, but I may not be reading it right. In the, the first paragraph, if the city's less than 20,000, it just looks like the city council points it only and doesn't offer the special election option, only in the 20,000 or more. But again, I may be reading wrong, subsection type of application.
That's where you would come.
My recollection of this is it's always been just like it is right now, where people came forward and said, I'm interested. There's no official, I'm interested in form, right? And what, but you did put the name.
I have to look at my notes, I've got a file on that. I do think that there used to be that the council had to deploy, you didn't have the option to.
That's a way of reading to me, but if they.
I think they modified that at some point, because where you have these or.
Yeah, the Mary Bottom is another one, and I don't know if it applies to both.
I'd have to look at it, I've researched, I've researched the issue before, executive session, did that, and one time before, seven years ago, my research hits, this league, at least at that time, that was authorized to do that, to the top of the council employee group.